Order, this is our Yayton Borough Caucus Meeting, April tenth, two thousand twenty-five. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
All right, Mr. Secretary, please begin roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor.
Esteemed Mayor Rowan Hepkins.
Present.
President Latoya Marrow.
Present.
Vice President Leona Roeklau.
Present.
Councilor Nicole Beatty is not present as of yet. Um, Councilor Antoinette Trueheart.
Present.
Councilor Michael Trent.
Present.
Councilor Jesse Peetz is not present. Councilor Lorraine Johnson will not be joining us this evening. Uh, we have Brianna Bryant from Kill Kenny Law.
Present.
Um, Nafis Nichols, our Finance Director, is not present this evening. Uh, Yolanda Hughes, our Tax Collector, is not present this evening. And we have Megan Tadaro from Penoni Engineering. And now we have, um, Councilwoman Nicole Beatty present.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we will begin with our Citizens Forum. I will begin with the Neti Antonio.
Um, it's interesting that when other residents put their comments in, we go by the name that's on the form. Um, but for me that we don't, but it is what it is. Um, first thing that I want to talk about is transparency. One of the main things that we should do is make sure that we're being transparent with regards to, um, everything. We need to, when we're making decisions, we need to be clear with regards to why we're making those decisions. If questions are asked, we need to answer those questions. Um, with regards to meeting agendas, the agendas that we're putting out there are very, um, generic. People have very, a lot of other things that they need to do. Um, so it's important for us to know what's actually going to be on the agenda, um, so that we can make a decision whether or not we should be attending these in person or not. Um, so if we could do something with regards to that. Um, with regards to expenses, we need to be very careful with regards to our expenses for this year. Everything is going up. We need to make sure that when we end this year, we end on budget or below budget. We cannot afford another year where we have to raise taxes for the residents. And with that, by the time that we end this month, we will be done one-third of the year. Um, so what I would like to ask is that we put something on the borough so that we could see where we stand, actual versus expenditures, and also a forecast. Um, they can do a forecast with regards to the runway, run rate. And I know that the Finance Director is not here, um, but if somebody could ask, um, potentially ask him so that we could see where we think that we're going to end the year. Um, he's probably already doing something like that so that he could give advice to the council with regards to expenses. Uh, we also need to take a look with regards to, once again, engineering expenses. Our engineering is very high. I knew that we're getting grants with regards to that, but we still need to take a look with regards to that. Um, we also need to take a look with regards to the solicitor expenses. Um, in some cases, we are making, um, requests that, um, are unnecessary. Um, so if we could just make it, make another note with regards to, um, trying to rein in some of these expenses, that would be great. And then, um, asking for clarification with regards to a comment that was made, um, at one of the meetings. I had heard that something had been put out, um, some communication that a resident had had with the councilor had been put out. I wasn't sure, um, I had heard it as a rumor. Councilor Beatty was kind enough to confirm afterwards that it did occur. She was also kind enough to ask Solicitor, uh, to give us clarification with regards to what kind of communication would occur. And while the Solicitor said that the communications are not privileged or confidential, and I understand that, they're not privileged and confidential, and if there is a lawsuit, um, that they are discoverable. But what kind of communications are actually able to be gotten by other residents? We were told that right-to-know requests could be put in, and I know that residents have put in right-to-know requests for different communications, and they're being denied. So what information is correct? What kind of communications between residents and counselors or residents and borough employees are actually able to be? Oh, okay, that's fine, but if we could get clarification on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, I mean, we can start with transparency. Uh, we know where your name is, and that's what I called you by, so that is being transparent. Um, we do have budget versus actual for our expenses, and we are within our budget. Um, we are barely out of the first quarter of this year, so there's no way that, um, we are behind in any of our reporting or, um, expenses. There's nothing to rein in, as things have barely been doled out in this first quarter. Um, additionally, our top-notch engineering firm has brought in several millions of dollars to this borough, and their tireless efforts to do so was a direct response to us saying, listen, if we are going to be able to continue working together, because we know that you are a top-notch engineering firm, then we're going to need more grants to come in, and that has far exceeded our expectations. Uh, we have thanked the engineering firm on a number of occasions for solving all types of problems in our community. So that is not an issue here. And if a right-to-know request for anyone is ever denied, it can be appealed. We don't just arbitrarily deny any requests. Um, there are sometimes residents request things that don't exist. You know, I can't give you a contract that we don't have, and when I say I, I just mean a representative of the borough can't give you documentation that doesn't exist. So, um, thank you for that. Next, we have Ms.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
With respect to the agendas. Have, have the agendas been altered at any time within the past two, three, four, five, six years?
No, um, no, that's, that's a yes or no question, a yes, a yes and maybe question. Um, our caucus meetings, they are, they are kind of open, so we may have different topics that are discussed here. That's why it's considered a workshop meeting, um, a working meeting. And our legislative sessions will include much more detail because we have to document what it is that we're voting on. And there's a procedure to add, change, table, and these are required to be submitted, um, and advertised twenty-four hours before we even have our meeting. So we don't have an issue with our agendas either. Okay, and, and that's, it's, it's interesting that it'll go either way, you know? We make it very detailed, and they'll say, we, you know, we didn't talk about this, we didn't do this, or the meeting was too long. And then we have a generic meeting that allows some leeway for discussion, and we're accused of not being transparent.
But the caucus meeting is to bring concerns.
Right.
And have a brief discussion about saying that need they.
Exactly, and we can, we are also permitted to add new business, um, within rubber's rules of order. Nothing can be fully exhausted, um, but thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair. Counselor Beatty. Hello, good evening. If you're going to quote me, Anna, or Diana, or whatever your name is, quote me right. I asked you if you got an answer to your question. I did not say what you were suggesting, suggesting that the mic happened, so don't misquote me. That's all.
Counselor Johnson, I'm sorry. Clara Johnson, I saw the C in Johnson, Ms. Clara Johnson, also a former counselor.
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
I used to be a counselor. I'm no longer a counselor now. Sometime back, I asked about placing the headstones back on the grave sites of the people buried in Graceland Cemetery. Uh, my question tonight is, can we, um, the group that started the mission, can we go forth with the project? Mike, um, the Public Works Director, have said to me that he had the headstones. Am I correct, the headstones today? The headstones are located at the Public Works Garage. Um, and I'm wondering if we can go forth with placing those headstones back on the ground, um, where they should be. I know I have to get that answer from counselors. Um, um, there is also signs that have a penalty attached to it, because I spoke about residents allowing their animals to defecate in the cemetery. I believe that Mike also said that there are signs already, and correct me if I'm wrong, that have, um, attached penalties to those signs. But of course, I do know in order for a person to get penalized, we have to have a picture and know who that person is. But my question is, can we post those signs and can we get busy back again, um, doing the work that the group started, um, to finish some of the project at Graceland Cemetery?
Okay, it was my understanding that that's on our spring agenda?
That's actually, we started marking stones that were in the ground already. If you look there, there are stakes with blue marks on them, so we're in the process of identifying what's there.
Thank you.
We started.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
You're welcome.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
Uh, what about the project that the, um, residents started, I believe, last year, or the year before? I believe Public Works was helping them with that with respect to the cement platform, and you started decorating it. Uh, it's not completed, is it?
No, it's not.
Not completed, but started, and, um, I want to put this, um, we're looking for growth in this platform. Growth for more trees, more plants, and moving it outwards, and different flags to put up there, so it's a, it's a work in progress.
Well, can I ask that Public Works and the committee, uh, the subcommittee who started that, that renovation, you guys worked together so that we can try to get it finished, you know?
Absolutely, I'm in contact with Clara, counseling things to improve it, absolutely.
Right, okay, wonderful. I just want to make sure that you guys are working together. I don't believe it's just, uh, Ms. Johnson, it's other members as well.
It's a group of us.
There's a whole group.
Yes, right, okay, wonderful.
Most of them are veterans of military status.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our Mayor's Report.
Madam President, my report will be submitted next week. I have nothing to add, uh, this week, thanks.
All right. Um, our Manager's Report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, tonight, we, uh, well, um, next week, we will present a few items that we hope to discuss in an upcoming executive session, uh, personnel-related. Um, the zoning board will also be, uh, requesting to fill its last, uh, vacancy. And, um, just a brief reminder that Earth Day is coming up, and I think, uh, somebody will probably talk, or talk about Earth Day in your presentation later on. Um, that's all I have for the Manager's Report.
All right, uh, the Mayor decided he has a report.
There is one thing, um, uh, actually a major thing. Um, uh, we have, uh, in coordination with, uh, Earth Day, we, uh, next week's Saturday, uh, the twenty-second, uh, we will be, uh, cleaning up.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The nineteenth, uh, West Cops Creek area, uh, in coordination with, uh, Public Works. We'll have rakes, gloves, uh, uh, all the equipment that we need, we just need volunteers. And, uh, I just want to also thank, uh, Vice President, uh, Roeklau for her initiative. Uh, so she, uh, pioneered this, and I'll be assisting, and some other counselors will be assisting. So we, uh, we do, uh, request volunteers, and they can, uh, call the borough.
Yes, they can email the borough.
Email the borough. Uh, anything to add that also, uh, Counselor, uh, Tony Trueheart's also the assistant.
So, um, Madam Chair, so my question would be to Mr. Cave, have we reached out to those companies that we'd like to partner with us on this endeavor?
For Earth Day?
For Earth Day, yes.
Yes.
So that's, everything is in place with our partners? Okay.
And who are some of the partners?
Who are they?
Uh, the confirmed, well, uh, the one that's confirmed is, is Restore.
Okay.
Um, and no response from ShopRite?
ShopRite, who can, well, we can talk later, let me know who you reached out to.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so so far confirmed by Restore.
Restore, yeah.
Okay, great.
That's all I have for Madam President.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our Solicitor's Report.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
The Solicitor's Office has been currently working on updating, working with the Borough Manager to update, uh, Ecode three sixty to accurately reflect the, uh, updated ordinances and resolutions. Drafting and amended ordinance, um, updating penalties for parking on the grass. That will be for the Legislative Meeting next week. The preparing discovery responses for ongoing litigation, and thank you to the Public Works Department, as well as Penoni Engineers and the Borough Manager for their quick responses and being able to finish that efficiently. Um, working with the Borough Manager and the RDA Solicitor for, um, with land bank referrals, but also exploring options for blighted properties, um, within the Blighted Properties and Conservation Act. And also, um, we had a case management conference this week, um, for the complaint and equity for ten twenty-four Church Lane, um, with trial is approaching. That's everything.
All right, um, do we have a, thank you for that, do we have a tax collector's report, or will that be at?
We'll have one next week.
Okay.
It's okay.
I get an Engineer's Report.
Good evening, um, I have three topics. The first one is a grant. Aren't done talking about them yet. Um, so at the end of the month, April thirtieth, DCD has a small water in sewer grant. They do not come around a lot, but they're, um, they welcome opportunities to improve your water sewer or storm sewer system, so something existing, um, and it is only a fifteen percent match. Um, so I have been in contact with, uh, Mike from Public Works. We made a little field trip before this to visit some sites. Um, there are actually two applications that, um, at least for discussion. Um, we would need a resolution next week. The first one is for a sanitary sewer improvement, um, at Bullock Avenue. It would supplement the CDBG application that is also went in at the end of the year. Uh, however, this, the scope of work is pretty high in the six hundred thousand, and CDBG does not usually support a project of that size. So I would want to combine those efforts. Um, the second, uh, grant opportunity, I think, would be a good consideration for this program is a storm sewer replacement, um, on Darnell between Church and Bullock. A lot of the inlets and pipes have collapsed in that area, and during rain events, there's a lot of ponding. Um, so there is nothing that says we can't submit two applications, and because they're different, while you will be competing against yourself, there's one storm, one sanitary, so I think it does look a little bit more appealing. So we would need a resolution for those, and then if you have any questions, I can answer that.
Um, the waters, watershed restoration protection, where are you a part of that?
Those watershed restoration protection program, those are due May thirty-first, um, through the DCD program? Is that, um, or is that the current award that came in? Is that what that one?
The current award.
For Providence Road, yes. That, what, that project was awarded, I believe, last month.
Okay, so, and we just received, I just received a notification, um, today to actually sign it.
Perfect.
Um, so I took care of it today. It was for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Is that one? You write so many grants you.
That sounds a little high, I mean, I'm not saying that.
I can't even remember all the money you get us saying.
That high, but I will double check, but that one was at an announcement.
Well, yes, it, this one says, dear grantee, the email is to advise you that your watershed restoration protection program commitment letter is attached, the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Hundred and fifty, yes, yes.
Will be electronically sent to our email address, so thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Counselor Roeklau, you have something?
I do. Um, Megan, I would like for you to just give a brief summary of the meeting we had with Pendot with respect to the Church and McDade intersection. Um, and thank you. I thank you and Joe for getting Pendot on the phone to talk with us, and we're going to be moving forward.
Yes, I think it was a very productive meeting. So, um, we, I think two weeks ago, we had an online, um, Team Zoom meeting with Pendot, representatives from the borough, engineer, um, I think Mike was on the phone, the chief was on the phone. Really, everybody that had seen these issues and bringing it to Pendot's attention. So first, we focused on, um, kind of some of the ongoing issues, telling them that the speed slot had worked, but that we kind of wanted to concern, uh, you know, issue our concerns regarding the speed coming into the intersection. Um, and then we did discuss in detail the ongoing improvements, um, regarding that intersection as well, and the one-way, and how that will improve the intersection once that is in. Um, we did get clarification yesterday that the ramp construction will start, um, April twenty-first, nineteenth, twenty-first? Twenty-first. Um, so once those ramps are constructed, the one-way will go in. Um, through that intersection, some of those improvements you'll see is there will be markers on the ground to guide you through the intersection because the one-way, um, you will no longer have traffic opposing you, so there's no longer cars stopping in the middle of the intersection to block, um, traffic as you move through. Um, there will be delineators guiding you away from the house, which we're hoping will really, um, improve visibility there. And our goal is to have those improvements go in and really study how traffic flows once those improvements are in. We don't want to make any big decisions until we observe the existing conditions, and since we're so close to seeing those go in, um, that's our first goal. We then did also follow up with a second speed slot, which we are, we have requested the Pendot, however, I'm, I don't know if we got clarification, or if anybody had any different interpretation, if that will, is something they'll allow prior, you know, until we look at the existing conditions of, of what's going in.
Well, it was my understanding that they, they were going to add a second speed slot on McDade going towards Church Lane around the Bullock, uh, street area.
They would prefer not to until those improvements are in. I think if we're still having speeding issues in there, we can bring that up, but they want to see how, they want to observe one, they only want to change one thing at a time, is really what we want to look at.
So from that phone call, they confirmed, uh, by May first, the bumpouts are going to be installed, the delineators?
We are, we are hoping, and, and the ramps are part of that, so I'm not sure May first is exact, but.
But that's, that was, that was living.
They'll be under construction on May first, so yes.
Okay, okay, and the delineators might be the plastic delineators, it will be a solid?
They're not, no, they're not bollards. Like, if you run into them, you're not going to, your car is not going to be damaged. They are more permanent than plastic, but they are not concrete, if that. Yes.
That's not what they said. On a, that's not what they said on a call, that's not what they said. They said they were going to make them solid, install solid delineators. Because I specifically asked, what are you talking about? Those flimsy, plastic white things that the buses.
Yes.
Install on the corners, and they said, yes, those. And I said, that's not going to work, that's not going to work. And then they said, you know what, we could make those solid.
Let me revisit what, let's get clarification, that is not, but again, how we, the terminology we use and what Pendot would use might be a little bit different than what we're picturing in our.
I mean, plastic and solid, that's pretty universal.
So solid for Pendot means solid color, is what they, so unfortunately, I think, I know, I know, like, solid reflectivity is unfortunately how, like, I would, but I understand what you're saying.
No, because we were specifically. They have been very consistent that we couldn't put anything permanent there that would cause any additional damage. And we, we encountered that when we talked about posts, we talked about fencing, we talked about boulders, we talked about bollards, and Pendot has always maintained that it couldn't be something that would cause it, that could cause additional damage or loss of life, and.
Well, Counselor Beatty was also on a call.
Hey, I'm not saying that you didn't hear something different.
Recollection of what was said?
I remember something said about solid, but that's their interpretation.
I will, I will get clarification on what.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, the ones that were in there right now are the plastic ones that will fly off. The ones that they're proposing get cemented to the ground, but they're still, they will knock away if you hit them, so.
Cause they have maintained, you know, that we, if we put anything there, then the liability would be on us if we, um, if anyone were, were hurt, or there was loss of life because, because of some type of impact with anything we put there, which is why we moved away from anything permanent like boulders, so.
Well, if we put it there, but if they put it there.
That, well, they, they said that they would, which is why we get to read.
Call, they did say they would do the solid, um, delineators. They did, because we were talking about that, um.
Well, Megan, Megan's going to get clarification.
Right, we was talking about that property, and we said, you know, they keep going into her backyard, right? And then one of the engineers from Pendot said, oh, well, that's why we put those, uh, reflective yellow signs with the arrows. And I said, yeah, and they ran into that. That's damaged down. And that's when they were like, you know what, we could put the solid ones in.
Okay, I'll get clarification, and we'll come back with a photo at least of what we're talking about.
So if they don't want to be, um, permanent, then we'll just have to, what, wouldn't we?
I will say, right now, with what is approved by Pendot, and, and I'll get clarification, if, if unfortunately it's not the solid that you're expecting, we will have to put in what is permanent and awarded in the contract right now, because that is approved to go through. We changed that, we're going back to Pendot to ask again. Granted, based upon our conversation, we might have a little bit of leeway, but let's get clarification on exactly what that means right now. Again, anything right now is better than, you know, and, and you have to remember the whole shift away, you're no longer having traffic come at you. We did at one point discuss the possibility of extending the curb out, which is something we could do in a future phase. A curb is not necessarily considered a, a wall or an obstruction, it's a, a safety for pedestrians. Not that I want to encourage pedestrians to come out either, so we have to, you know, consider both sides of that. But right now, let's get clarification on exactly what we're, um, what is going in at the end of this month, and then if we need further discussion, we'll have that.
Because they did commit to also having a subsequent meeting with the residents in that area, right?
I agree, and, but I think we agreed to that after these improvements went in.
Right, that's why they said after May first.
Right.
Okay, as long as we're moving forward and we're not dragging our feet.
Well, we did receive the Pendot, the, as we mentioned on that phone.
The permits?
The next day.
Good, good, because Joe asked about three or four times about.
You heard that?
We didn't get the permits, we didn't get the permits, and then they finally was like, they're out the door today.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah, um, in those discussions, uh, is it, uh, still in the, uh, planning to redo the lights, including, uh, the driveway coming out? Cause there's no light for that, is that, is, that still in the often?
Redo the lights at the intersection?
Correct.
Um, yeah, was that done, or is that coming?
Yes.
That's all part of that project?
Including the driveway, light for the driveway coming out, right?
Good, I, I believe it has to be, but I will confirm how that.
Cause I don't want that to be missed in the, um, in the translation either. Cause right now, it's, it's really dangerous, you, there's no light, there, there's no traffic signal. It's like a free-for-all, that, that adds to the, that adds to the, uh,
Okay.
The danger of the, the whole intersection. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair. Uh, if I could ask a question, can you give an update on the property? What's going on with the construction of that site right there on Chester Avenue that was stalled for a long time, and now it looks like things are starting to happen again?
Do I know?
I know they had some, some, uh, environmental issues with that.
Across the street.
Across the street with Chester.
Eleven Hundred Chester.
Is that eleven hundred Chester?
The DEP, uh, issue, I think you're, you're asking about.
Right.
The moratorium on the sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
Um, so we are completing a borough-wide I and I study for, to identify areas. Once we have our baseline, that will, that's one of the grants that, um, we've talked about. That will take about three months, we'll have a baseline, and then from there, every single thing that happens, a house gets demolished, uh, we do one of our sanitary sewer at once, that's all credit back to the borough, um, and that project will be included in that analysis.
All right.
I have two other things, sorry, I didn't get this.
Oh, sorry.
Um, the road program I wanted to talk about for this year. Um, I know we've been coordinating with, um, Finance Manager, Public Works on coming up with a road program. Ideally, we would have a list and get approval to proceed with bidding next week. I know we have the two blocks of Yayton Ave, which we have from last year, and I know, um, Public Works is going to prepare a list, so I just wanted to put that on your radar, that we would probably be asking for approval to proceed with bidding next week. Um, and then the last update is regarding the twelve nineteen Longacre demolition. Um, we were able to resolve all the property notification issues and get clarification. Contracts were sent to the. Contracts were sent to the contractor to execute. They will be with you guys shortly, and as soon as those are done, we will get that completed.
ETA on that?
Um, the contractor keeps asking me about status, so I'm hoping that means he's ready to go as soon as contracts are executed. Um, I have to update the county because they're paying for it, so other than that, May? I, 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 I think that that's a reasonable, it should not take long once the, once they're out there. So like I said, contract execution with you guys and getting the county on board, that should not be very long. Okay?
Okay.
All right, have a good evening.
Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our report section, our, um, finance director. We will accept the financial report next week. Uh, we'll move on to our ordinance and zoning.
Thank you, Madam Pres, excuse me, thank you, Madam President. Uh, it's been a busy, March was a busy month for new permits, um, for both residential and commercial, um, parcels. Uh, as well as new violations for, for grass, grass is coming back. Um, so, um, um, our co-team has been very active in looking for, uh, grass issues as well as paving. There's a nu- number of paving issues where they've been issuing violations and citations. Excuse me, um, our office, uh, this should say, um, for zoning use applications. Uh, one for home daycare, uh, two for new fencing, um, and one for an ice cream store. Uh, they're all in process currently. On a few unfortunate ordinance reminders, uh, we've gotten a, a, a number of, uh, animal defecation complaints. So I'm just putting this reminder out there, I also are going to unfortunately put it in the newsletter and on the website. Um, a number, it's been the number one complaint over the past, uh, couple of weeks, unfortunately. So just a reminder there, um, parking on unsuitable surfaces, uh, that's one that we've noticed, uh, quite a bit, especially of late. Um, unable, we're unable to park on a non-paved surface, um, even temporary is, will result in violation. Uh, and then, um, lastly, the undesirable accumulations on private property, um, been a, been a, been a bit of an uptick there. Um, our co-team, our code enforcement team has been, uh, specifically looking for, uh, these types of accumulations. They, they seem to, um, pop up quite a bit of late. Um, but we just wanted to send those reminders out, but, um, that concludes my report.
Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Cave, can you give an example of parking on a non-suitable surface?
Oh, yeah, um, grass, mud, um, anything that's not paved or blacktop, uh, cement. Uh, it's, it's just not appropriate to, to cause ruts in the grass, um, let oil leak into, um, into the, into the soil. It's not appropriate for the environment or.
I.e. front lawn, side lawn.
Front lawn, back lawn, side lawn.
Mr. Cave, if I, uh, I dump a load of gravel on my front lawn, does it now become parking?
Yes, it, 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 it kind of, it kind of could, but you would, uh, need to permit that, right? Mr., uh, Summers, uh, you, you would need to get a permit for that.
Okay. You, you guys are laughing at me like that's not going to happen. Somebody's going to dump a load of gravel on their front lawn and they're going to say it's a parking lot. Right, you need to have, I would believe, I would think you need to have a curb cap.
You have to get zoning and.
All right, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you, Madam President.
All right, uh, public safety? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped public word. All right, I was going to let that other guy go. You said it.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am the old guy. Public Works did respond to some emergency callouts this month, pushes the police in several situations. Tree down on Allen Drive. E-waste, April eleventh, between eight and twelve, and, I'm sorry, that's yard waste, April eleventh. E-waste is April twenty fifth, between eight and two. Earth Day, we spoke about, we are, uh, in full force with Earth Day, April nineteenth. Please everybody come out and volunteer. Community Park, uh, the engineer I walked to Community Park, checked everything out. A final inspection will be next week for, um, our punch list. Flag Day is in full force, we've been approved for everything we were looking for from the county, we're in good shape for that. Public Works did install a, the new digital speed sign on McDay Boulevard eastbound to help deter the speeding and help that intersection, uh, keep people slower. Big one here is the Pico gas installation is moving into Yaden in full force. They will be blocking all Wycombe Avenue, Monday and Tuesday. So we're actually going to shut down Lansdowne and Bailey. We're taking Bailey Road all the way down to Union Avenue per Sergeant Johnson and my, and the chief's request. Too many cars, too many trucks, too many, um, too much traffic following up there. We're going to shut everything down for two days on Bailey Road, Lansdowne to Wycombe. That will be probably the biggest detour that we're going to have. Uh, and the rest of the week is going to be a shorter one. Probably Wycombe to Union is going to be, uh, probably another week or so, but that shouldn't be too bad.
No, I'm sorry, what did I do wrong? You said.
They're doing a gas installation, new gas pipe from Wycombe and McDay. Now they're into Yaden and Wycombe and Bailey. We're going to go down Bailey to Union and then Union to Fairview. So we're.
The, the street is currently what material?
Which street?
The street that they're, that we're digging up?
We're, we're, they're moving into our street, which is now going to be concrete.
Right, are they replacing it with concrete or they replacing it with asphalt?
Oh, no, they'll replace everything back the way they found it.
Okay.
And that probably won't happen until, I'm going to say, uh, Octoberish for the, for the restoration. They have to lay the pipe down, they have to tap in all the residents on Bailey Road and Wycombe Avenue with new gas services. So that's going to be a few months worth of work.
Okay, but they replace, because I, I know that that, that stretch has always been pretty difficult because it's not regular asphalt.
No, it's not asphalt at all, it's all concrete. What they take out is what they're going to put back in.
Pinky swear?
No bigger than that, I guarantee it.
All right.
Um, Pico Gas did some work on the nine hundred block of McDay Boulevard, West Cops Creek Parkway two, Chester Avenue. And then up to Cypress Street, I will have an update on that tomorrow and we'll notify everybody when that's going to be completed totally. And obviously, the Church Lane and McDay Boulevard intersection we talked about earlier is going to resume on April twenty first. Any questions?
Um, maybe I'm poor, I said, um, Wycombe Avenue. You said Union to Fairview, you said something about Lansdowne Avenue. So where does Lansdowne Avenue come from?
This report was done Friday, this changed today.
Okay.
So what I'm speaking of is current, what's on the report is not current. This was, this was something that changed today and will start on, on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
If you need more clarification, I'll send, I'll send you.
No, I just, like, you talked about Union, Fairview, this way, Lansdowne Avenue, like, two blocks up.
Go that way. Okay, go the other way. Stay away from it, it's going to be, it, it'd be a little crazy.
Mr. Cave.
Madam President, um, Mr. Pozzolo, can you elaborate on the, uh, the, the yard waste parameters?
Yard waste parameters would be anything from your yard, anything that's dead, any trees, any leaves, any bushes, any grass clippings. As long as it's manageable for a, uh, residence to get it to us and put it in our, our facility, that's fine. Anything that's, was growing, yard.
So they would bring it down to the, the Public Works yard on that date?
On that date, correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Trent.
Yeah, on, um, Wycombe, they're just about finished, but when are they, or when do they expect it repainted there?
That's not, not even close to being finished. They just started laying the main pipe, they're having, um.
So you have Wycombe and Bailey Road kind of locked off for the same, next week?
Next week, Monday and Tuesday, yes. That intersection, just stay away from the whole intersection of, uh, Wycombe, Bailey and, um, Elbron, Elder. Everything is just going to be, it's going to be a mess. But there's a safety issue in that whole intersection, they have to shut everything down so these men can work at that intersection safely.
When do they expect the Wycombe to be finished? Will that be finished before Bailey?
Yes, they started at McDay Boulevard, they're working their way up to Wycombe, then they're going to go Wycombe to Union. When everything settles and all the, um, houses, each house has to be tapped into the new gas system. So you're talking about sixty-five houses down on Wycombe Avenue and Darby, five or six in, uh, Yaden right there. It's, it's going to be lengthy, but you'll be able to travel up and down. Repaving, it's not going to happen till spring, I mean, uh, fall. It has to settle, it, they're still have a lot more work to do.
One, one other question, uh, I know they started removing some of that stuff on the old Yaden, but when do they expect it finished?
I don't have the time to know that. I could, I, I can follow up with that, with that, with that.
Uh, with respect to the trees, um, I think this is a good time just to remind the residents with respect to the che- trees on their property, to have them trimmed back from the wires. Hanging over the sidewall, hanging over the street, because we just saw what happened. You know, within the last week or so with trees. And if you have a tree on your private property, it's important that you maintain that tree because you don't want to cause an unfortunate accident. So this is the time to start maintaining. So trim the branches, if your tree is dead, please call a tree expert in to see what needs to be done to have them removed. And just be safe, because it's too much going on.
We're going to add that to our, uh, our spring release letter.
Okay, good.
How's that?
And Public Works is, they're working on the shade trees as we speak. That's an ongoing, uh, job that Public Works is going to make sure that they are going to maintain the shade trees as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Pozzolo, um, when we had conversation about the Earth Day with the cleanup, we also discussed about planting the trees that were donated. So is that still going to be a part of that process?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll hand delivery, um, flyers to residents who have already emailed me that they want.
They want, okay, good.
Yes, they're all identified in, in this event.
Now, those residents will be assisting if possible, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, we're all being involved, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, Mr. Cave, do you have an email, um, for the Zoom audience that you can recite if they want to volunteer?
Yes, it's info@yadenborough.com.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And that's also, uh, a flyer on the website and social, social media.
Info@yadenborough.com?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
In the month, uh, month of March, uh, twenty twenty-five, we responded to nine hundred and seventy-two calls for service. There were four criminal arrests in the month. There was two non-traffic citations issued for disorderly conduct. Sixty-six traffic tickets were issued, seven hundred and sixty-nine parking tickets were issued. I wanted to, um, last month I spoke about the incident that happened at one ten Norma, the shooting on March sixteenth. I'm happy to announce that an arrest warrant has been issued and they will be taking the individual into custody tomorrow, will be turning himself in. He is so far being charged with attempted murder, aggravated assault, weapons charges, robbery, and a list of others. Um, and I publicly want to thank, you know, Billy McCollum was the first one on the scene, he handled the job great. When I got there, everything was locked down. Leah came on the scene, did a great job, has done fantastic job of what she's been handling. She's had a lot of investigations going on and CID. I, you know, the district attorney's office has been tops, we've been working constantly with them, um, and they've done a great job. From the night they were there, processing the scene with us, i- it's just unbelievable working hand in hand with Leah. And it, it definitely takes a village and, um, there's other parts of this investigation that we can't get into right now. But eventually, I'm hoping to bring some other information to council. But so, so far, we're, we're taking someone off the street, hopefully tomorrow he'll turn himself in with the lawyer he promised. So we know how that works, but, um, excellent job all around, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Thank you. Very good news.
No, any questions?
Uh, you have, uh, two other departments, or one and a, one and a possible.
Well, I actually. Is it possible, and, and I know it's possible, now that we have, um, more, uh, police personnel, um, the speeding on certain streets? Um, I'm noticing Church Lane, we get a lot of speeders, especially in the morning, right? And Cypress Street, mainly on a Friday night and Saturday night. I don't know what's going on, but that's when I hear a lot of cars, like, just revving up Cy- Cypress Street. I don't know what it is about Cypress Street.
Maybe Jody's around?
Who?
Jody, I forgot, it might be before your time, but. No, um, uh, well, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll put that out there, that's, yeah, we'll definitely. We have been, they've been hitting and it's great to hear on the radio constantly when we're in the office, like, you know, forty-six, hold me out with a car stop, forty-six. They are, they're hitting it hard. And just to announce, the four, the three officers that we hired, they are now officially in the squad, so we have four-person squads. And, you know, even, even it picked up with the paces of us going in schools again, doing school checks, so they're out there. And, um, they're, they're definitely, we're stopping cars, a lot of cars.
Okay, wonderful. I'm sorry.
Speaking to the mic.
Was it someone else?
No, okay. Madam Chair.
Um, I wanted to pay a picket bag off Council Road Town, Bailey Road is probably the most egregious speed. That's like a drag race, like, on the day, but I'm sure we've been.
Well, um, not that, Mike and I have talked several times, even with the engineer, to try, I don't understand why they can't put other stop signs in there to slow it down. It is, it's.
I think that's a great idea, we're going to have to vote on that. That's not a rule?
It's in a study.
Traffic study, that's, that's in a stud, yeah, it's in the traffic study, we're, because it, it, I agree with you. No, I, I, I agree with you.
I would rather do that than have these people driving forty-five, fifty miles per hour. I promise not to do it anymore.
Well, if we can get Joanna McClintock to, to reduce the, you know.
You know, they'll probably be on the table and then. I don't do that.
No, I'm saying, I've, I've been trying to lobby to get, there, there's a, uh, with the red light cameras, it'd be great to have. But the problem is, right now you have to have twenty thousand residents, so every time I see Joanna McClintock, I'm like, hey, Speaker, how about ten thousand? Because then we would get right in there and that would be something that would definitely help. Just with, um, bus patrols, we launched in January seventh, already there was two hundred and seventy-six incidents of that, that being activated. Not necessarily people being ticketed, but two hundred and seventy times people overtook a bus when that red light was, when that stopped. That just shows you, like, people, and I don't, it's not just Yaden, I mean, we drive, I'm sure we drive all around. Everyone just, stop signs are suggestions anymore, they're not even stop signs anymore, so.
Cute and costly, um, so, yeah, traffic studies are really expensive, so we need to figure out, you know. All right, anything for emergency management?
Yes, um, just, and I, we all see the news in reference to Chester Crozier. Uh, we are working with Elwin, which is a mental treatment, uh, mental crisis with Elwin. In case, God forbid, Chester Crozier closes, I don't know, I'll tell you right now, I don't know what we're going to do because we would have to go to Bryn Mawr and the problem is technically Bryn Mawr for, for three oh two commits. And the problem is technically that part of the hospital is in Montgomery County, not Delaware County. So we're, we're working, we're, we're keeping an eye with the emergency management to see what's going to happen. And that's going to affect a lot of us, hopefully it won't close, so.
Okay.
Uh, but that's, ends my report.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
And is there any, is there a representative from the fire department here? I didn't know which you were representing. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
Mayor, Council. Thank you for the support of our Yaden Fire Company over the years. The Yaden Fire Company was founded and has continuously been in service since nineteen oh four and currently have fifty-five volunteer members. In two thousand and twenty-four, we responded to one thousand one hundred and sixty-six fire incidents, including building fires, car accidents, carbon dioxide incidents, fire alarms, sick and injured residents. We are very fortunate to have a great mutual aid partners that we reciprocate aid for, primarily including Darby Fire Company, Lansdowne Fire Company, and Clifton Heights Fire Company. Unfortunately, we are nearing the life expectancy of our ladder truck. Our current ladder truck is, uh, approaching seventeen years in service. And most aerial apparatus have an in-service life of fifteen to twenty years. So we are asking for the chance to schedule a meeting or call with borough leadership to discuss the budget feasibility and possible timeline of procuring a new ladder truck. Is there any information I could research for that possible meeting? Please let me know.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I would think that that's something we would want to schedule that meeting, sit down and talk with him sooner than later. So who is it that we need to coordinate with to have that meeting?
Um, you can coordinate, myself and, uh, President and Vice President of the Fire Company, which is here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll put some dates out.
Okay, thank you. All right, Planning Commission?
Uh, we have nothing you need to report, it's done.
All right. Uh, Library?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carla Kaufman, I'm the new Library Director.
Welcome.
And, thank you, and happy National Library. I come from the VA Library Hospitals, I was the Chief of the Library, the Medical Library at the Department of Veterans Affairs in Philadelphia.
Speaking to the microphone, it's, it's a Zoom.
And I also was, uh, Medical Librarian for the Department of Veterans Affairs in Erie, Pennsylvania. So I actually moved here from Northeast Ohio in twenty seventeen to work at the Veterans Hospital. I'm looking forward to increasing programming as well as writing grants for library improvements initiating. Um, that library is going to be initiating a men's book club on Saturdays at eleven, starting in June. So I would like to invite one of the male borough personnel to lead it. And if there is an interest, please reach out. I'm also looking forward to increasing programming for Yaden's considerable population of veterans. Additionally, I am a notary public and therefore the library is now offering notary services to library patrons at no charge, but library patrons are welcome to make a donation to the library. Also, thank you to the Friends of the Library and Board of Trustees for providing lunch for the library staff this week for National Library Week.
Thank you. Welcome, you have a great team over there. Uh, lastly, we have recreation.
Good evening again, everyone, so as we've been reporting, Flag Day planning is underway. We are excited, so I wanted to share with you all some information regarding Flag Day. Um, the parade will now be on Bailey Road as opposed to Church Lane. So that's something that we decided to do this year a little differently. I've already spoken to Holocross Cemetery, thank you, Ms. Samuel for the suggestion, cause we were like, oh, yeah, what if they have a funeral that day? That'd be horrible, they could be part of the parade too, but. Um, so we wanna make sure that we don't have any, I mean, we don't know if there will be a funeral that day, but there is another interest on McDay Boulevard, as you all know. So the parade will commence at eleven AM from Community Park. So if you want to see the parade, you're gonna line up along Bailey Road, tell your friends, all of that. It will go up Bailey Road to the circle and then we will start our program thereafter. I am also equally excited for some of the activities that we have, um, planned for that day. Of course, a lot of stuff for the little ones, stuff for the big ones too, the grownups, um, live music, food. We're working on securing more, um, of our vendors and also our drone show and, uh, light presentation at the field. So someone suggested that we do something else at Kerr that evening. So I said, well, why don't we have ice cream? And I don't want the corny, like, you know, trucks that come around, I, I want something nice. I don't like mediocre-looking stuff, so I'm gonna try to get a really, really nice ice cream truck. So please come out, tell your friends, tell your family, please bring your people because we are going to have a ball this year at Flag Day. And then we'll talk about what comes up next after Flag Day, after Flag Day. All right, that's all I have for right now.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, our rain barrel workshop is full, but, uh, we're gonna add two additional ones, uh, the twenty-seventh of May.
Excuse me, sir, what's your name?
You mean tonight? It used to be Elmore, but now it's Roy Hunter.
All right, all right, thank you. Well, I see some new faces in the audience, I just wanna make sure everyone knows. He's, he's such a staple here, he doesn't even introduce himself anymore.
That's bad. I had a birthday Sunday, so I'm sitting here.
Look at you, twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-one, that's good, thirty-nine.
Couple times.
So we're gonna have, uh, additional rain barrel workshops at Upper Darby Township on May twenty-seventh and Morton Borough on June third. So people who can't get into our, uh, rain barrel workshop are, they're really, uh, trying to push all of these rain barrels because some of the funding, uh, has been, um, halted or changed because of what's going on in the federal government. So we wanna get these rain barrels out to people. So we'll get that on the website about the twenty-seventh in Upper Darby and the, uh, third in Morton. Uh, we talked about the cleanup, uh, this week, on the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, yes, we talked about that. Uh, the second annual Rap Curry Track Meet is also gonna be held on April nineteenth at Kerr Field, so that'll be a busy day. Right now, we have more than forty schools coming, uh, from Maryland, Delaware, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. So we talked to Chiefs and, uh, we'll, we'll coordinate, uh, what's going on. There's a lot of things going on at Kerr Field because they now have flag football for the young ladies. The softball, baseball, and track. So constantly, every day, there's something going on. Right now, they have something going on, uh, with flag football cause they're playing night flag football games for the young ladies. So, uh, there's a lot of stuff going on. So we'll, we'll try to keep Chief up to date on all the things that are going on, uh, at, uh, at Kerr. Um, we're planning our vegetable program and I think this year is, we're gonna be really big, uh, for the summer and the fall. So we hope to start right around July fourth, uh, as we did last year on Wednesdays from four to six. Uh, we had over a hundred people last year, so, uh, I think that's gonna be pretty big. Um, construction of the rain garden at Community Park is starting. Uh, Megan is, we're working through some things with Megan, uh, but that's also starting. And I think due to the doggy bag situation, I think we can get some more doggy bags like we did last year and have them, and give them out here in the building. I see people, I tossed one to somebody with a dog, uh, so they come in little things that go on your leash and you can do that. So I think we're gonna try to get a couple thousand of those, uh, to give away in the borough. So we'll do that through the store or the collection.
All right. I have one question. What time on the nineteenth, the Rap Curry Second Annual Track?
The meet starts officially, I think, at nine thirty and people will start to come in probably about seven, if I'm not mistaken. We'll be there all day.
In the morning?
In the morning, yeah, it'll be, it'll run through, last year, I think, we finished about five or so, yeah.
Okay, cause the cleanup starts at eight, it's from eight to twelve.
Yeah.
But we're gonna be in an area that.
You're gonna be down at the other end, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We shouldn't have too much of a conflict, I guess it's just a matter of moving the buses.
That's the only thing I was thinking about.
Yeah.
With all those events at the Kerr Field, is the school district provide any security?
Yes, they have their SSO officers, uh, they use, and then we have, you know. We've got a large crowd, this will be a large crowd, mostly it's not spectators, it's just athletes, you know, from, you know, school will bring boys and girls, so they'll bring, one school will bring forty people.
I mean, for the other events, like you said, girls.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's security for all of those events, yeah. Yeah, they don't have anything there without a security.
And then they, they've submitted a suggest, a plan for changes going forward, right? No?
I'm just bad about this event tonight, thank Mr. Roy, we didn't know about this event.
So after tonight, we'll make sure we have a. Okay. Okay.
Well, again, because I'm kind of halfway involved with track.
Hmm, I didn't notice.
Yeah, didn't notice. Yeah, we, we definitely try to keep Chief involved and, you know, so he knows what's going on, even the smallest event. You know, cause there's things that go on up there that sometimes we don't know about because they're starting to, sometimes they'll lease the field to someone else, so we still have to know.
So Chief and I previously went to a meeting with the school district where they said that they were, you know, that we, we came up with a plan and a communication plan as to how this was going to work, when they would provide extra security. I mean, it was mostly surrounding football.
Right.
But we agreed that this would be the plan for all events, including, um, us writing, you know, had, them have, having responsibility for, um, events that spill over into the community, so, uh, maybe we need to, well, I think the chief is on it.
They, they have, or, uh, they reached out to us for events that are happening in May, so we're already getting ready to staff those events. Tell them what, how many officers we need, so we agreed the numbers. But this one, I, I'm glad Mr. Roy told me, he's a blind side, me in that room, and I, and I sent some several text messages to darn out, so.
Okay.
They're probably gonna have a couple of summer track meets also in May and June. So it's always something going on up there, so we need to schedule a calendar.
And, and then the, the track meets are, they, they present a bit different from the, uh, from like the football games, cause again, there's not a lot of spectators. Um, and it's something that our police department has managed before without any, without incident. But again, we still wanna make sure that we are being proactive and not, uh, reactive and, and sticking to the plan that we had in place to, uh, to make sure that we don't overburden the community, so, um.
All right.
So with respect to this upcoming event, if you do not have enough personnel, you have a plan B to ensure that we can partner with?
And can I, I, I forgot, I just don't mind. Can I?
Thank you. Okay.
The thing I'm talking about is, um, we're talking about funding and budgets.
We can't have, we're not at, like, cause they have people on Zoom.
We're, we're gonna tell them, because of last year, we need at least eight officers and that'll be on overtime. And reconcile the budget, if you look at the budget and you see the overtime from our department from the last two months, you're gonna probably wanna throw me out the window. But that's all from the, the big dig down there. So we have to have four officers per day, one overtime, eight hours a day, per officer, four. So, but that's all reconciled. So once we bill them or once we bill the school district, we get all that money back and we have officers on task force. We, we calculated it, so when it comes up, they know. But it looks like we're spending all this overtime, but it's actually being reconciled. So with that, we're gonna need at least seven to eight officers. Last year, I think we had at least, cause I was, I was out there all day, I think we had like maybe eight to nine officers on overtime last year to make your runs, cause the bus, buses, you gotta park the buses and then, you know, gotta make sure the buses are lined up and the kids are getting in and kids are getting out.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Um, does Lansdowne Police Department have any security at all?
Yes, we will, we will reach out, um, cause you could probably imagine, it's not popular for our, a lot of officers don't wanna work the, the football games for nighttime. So we reach out to our partners in Sector Four, just like if they ask us for basketball games, cause we have, that's why we all work together, that's why when we did National Night Out, cause you have to work together with your neighbors. I know a lot of people don't understand that, but that community working together, that's real important.
And the buses know the route they're supposed to travel.
That's what, yeah, that, that's would be the school district to tell them how to get in and how to set them up. And unfortunately, last year, we had some buses parking on the dirt, then I believe the dirt's our property, right? Yeah, so I apologize for that, but these big buses trying to get in, but, you know, there's really not a lot of place to park and if we park them on the street, we'll hear that. Then we have the people going down with the little roar, like, they're parked on the dirt, you know, we, we apologize. If I could make the buses disappear, I probably wouldn't be here, I'd be in Las Vegas right now.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, thank you for that.
My privilege.
Was there anything else for you, Mr. Hunter? That's it, all right, anything else for the, for the group? Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Our mayor has requ, it was, has requested a motion to adjourn. Shall we entertain it? It's been moved and properly seconded, wait, I'm sorry, we didn't argue. We need to argue, right? Isn't that what everyone came here to see? No, okay, all right then, meaning adjourn.